To the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the meeting of March eleventh, two thousand thirteen. With that, roll call.
Larry?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Semansky?
Here.
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 Waylon?
Here.
Okay, in your packet you have the minutes of the February eleventh, two thousand thirteen meeting. Any additions, corrections? If none, a motion in order approved.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion seconded. Discussion? None, roll call.
Clearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Fulmer?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Okay, clerk's report?
The only thing I have is the tax income received since the last meeting, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Any questions at the clerk? If none, we'll go recognition of audience. Anyone wish to address the board's concerns? Name, address?
Bob Howard, I'm Will County Board. Washington County Supervisor. First of all, I commend Paul and Bob for coming out to the Will County Board meeting, this committee of the whole. And I'm just saying this for clarification. That vote was on governance of the airport. They actually gave us a presentation from the...
Financial.
Yeah, council. And then they explained everything what was going on out there as far as the Iron Green Communities and also the Alnak Plan. And the problem is, is if the county board would just either just take it off its agenda entirely, or if they would just stand back and just pretend it's not going to exist, any entity could come in there, particularly Alnak, and actually take control of governance of the board. And with Will County providing a plan for governance of the board in the future, is basically they would have to come to the county at some point in time if the airport ever came into reality and say, okay, what would you like to do? You're probably going to get a first chance to actually show us how you're going to govern the board, finance the airport, that type of thing. So, just for clarification, because I know when you read the newspapers, no offense, sometimes it doesn't really get reflected entirely on what was said, but that was entirely a vote for governance of the board. So, and I know Bob and Paul, and I actually learned a lot by sitting there listening with the Alnak. And I thought Alnak went away with Jesse Jackson, but it did not. It's actually out there, you know, live. And I know you're probably going to cover it more detail later tonight. And the second thing I'd like to say is, I know as Mayor Fulmer comes to the closure of the meetings, I'd like to say this. I say, in the past, as Council Supervisor, him and I used to butt heads a lot, we used to argue about a lot of stuff, but at the end of it, we'd always laugh and joke and pat each other on the back. And what I can say about Mayor Fulmer, Mayor Fulmer actually really cares about people. And Mayor Fulmer earned my respect. And I believe the highest compliment a man can pay another man is the term respected. I do respect you, Mr. Fulmer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. One quick question while we're talking of airport. What's the position on the county board as far as the eminent domain process? Because I don't know, there is an email out there floating about the farm that was taken by IDOT or going to be taken, and they refuse the offer. And what's the position on that?
What I asked, I asked Bruce, that's the chairman, Bruce Weetfeld, or he used to be the chairman, so he's chief of staff for the county board portion, not the executive of the county board portion. I asked him to go through all the resolutions, reformulate a resolution. It puts it all on there. We oppose eminent domain, we oppose quit take, we oppose all of these different items. We oppose the land banking until FAA decision is given. But again, as state statute actually lays out, we can only provide non-binding resolutions. And basically, that's our recommendation to the state, but at that time, we can't enforce it. So, but yes, we do oppose that. And it's the position of the board. And again, I asked Bruce to actually refine all those, bring those together, make them can fresh them up and bring them back to the board.
Until such time the FAA comes up with their recorded decision, really, I don't know why, why they're obtaining round, you know? Because you don't know if there's going to be an airport yet or not.
Correct. And I agree with you. Recently, though, I believe a judge in Will County...
The appellate court found for the FAA and the state procuring the property.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Now, that's in the judicial system of Will County. That's a judge making that. That's not the county board.
Right, right.
That's not our county board.
That's why I was wondering where your position was, that's all. Yeah.
Do you think it would be possible to have the fire group do the big acquisition part of the government?
Oh, absolutely. I think I didn't say it. I said I had Susan Shay from her saying this to you. We need to hear from...
Well, we asked Aaron if he would come and...
Yes, absolutely.
I think it'd be good proof.
Tomorrow, I'll contact Bruce Weetfeld, I'll make that request. And if there's anybody else that the county can invite out here, that's not a problem. And after living out here through all of this airport mess for so long, I actually learned a lot by sitting and, you know, I mean, giving that presentation. And I know, you know, Bob and Paul, that you probably knew all of that already.
We forgot it. We forgot it.
Exactly. You mentioned Spenceley and I forgot.
Yeah, we forgot all that.
And again, it just, you know, reading a newspaper, watching TV, it's like, oh, Jesse's gone, so Alnak's gone. But Alnak is out there. It's an actual legal agency that's like, that can actually pursue it. And again, you know, the airport vote that day was strictly for governance.
But you know, then, and by, meanwhile, it was going to be in my report anyhow, being we're talking about this, if the Alnak group would take it, they were promising these people off-site, all the monies coming off of the airport and that. Once you accept federal dollars, none of that money can go off the airport site per se. And I think that was sold under false pretenses. And a lot of people have been sold on that, you know?
Correct.
So, I mean, that's very important.
And I believe it was about a forty-five minute presentation.
Yeah.
We found out about it by accident, Bob. There was some other towns that were upset that they didn't get notified about it. We got it because Paul's in some kind of news group. I don't know, guys were discussing it. If there's a meeting like that, you think we should attend, others? Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
And actually, I'm chairman of the legislative committee. And what happened was, is we actually redo our agendas every year. So, we redid the agenda. And there was, there's a board in there, basically a couple paragraphs about the airport. But again, what had happened was, is there's a lot of new board members, and myself included, I mean, not been there for years or whatever, but I still knew. The other board members, I think Mr. Bruce has had sat through all of this. So, they knew within and out. And then, in the meantime, what happened was, is then it was brought up, and then it was, there was a question like, well, what is this airport? And then it was brought up as committee of the whole meeting. And that was strictly an educational meeting. And at the end, basically, it just had to do with governance, if we would, you know, yield governance on it. And there was no other vote that the county board could really take that would protect the residents besides let's stay at the table, you know, at that point in time. And again, I have to commend the mayors, you know, and I know Bob, you've been involved in it. I mean, you're protecting our interest out here.
It's the only reason we go.
Yeah, and it's a tough call, because again, you get people saying, well, you're for the airport, or you're against the airport. But at the same time, you're just protecting the interest out here, because it's an outside entity. And they made that very, very clear, an outside entity can come in and actually take it over. So...
You're playing defense.
Exactly, exactly. That was the smartest and the best move you've ever done.
But you have one individual testified that said, how can you be against the airport when I have a seat on the board? And I disagree with that a hundred percent.
There was a governance vote, though. That was not, you know, we didn't get into discussion of whether we're for or against the airport, it was just strictly governance.
But you heard the one individual, so...
Correct. But again, every individual's invited.
Yeah, I understand.
Again, like I said, and I can't say this enough, I mean, all the years I sat through it, and I listened, you know, Bob, to you and Bob on the explanation of it, but I really never had a full understanding of it till that.
No, it was good.
But thanks for coming out there. And what I'll do is, I'll have Bruce include you in any of that. We'll just put you on email list.
Yeah, we'd like to know what's going on.
Okay. We also got concealed care and gaming coming up.
Are the counties allowed to do gaming in unincorporated areas yet?
What had happened was, they brought up gaming at one of legislative committee meetings again. Basically, with the county not taking any position on it, it allowed gaming in the unincorporated areas. That's our understanding. But I asked the state attorney to actually give us a definition before we discuss this in the committee meeting. And then I'm waiting for that. Bruce is awaiting. But I'll share that with you, too, because the problem is, some of the unincorporated areas have gaming already.
They do.
They do. And then what's going to happen?
In the county?
In the county revenue from that?
The county revenue?
A small portion, yeah. But I know, I believe you made a wise decision with your gaming decision, because it seems like it's helping out quite a bit, so...
Every little bit.
That's what I'm told. I haven't seen one yet.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Well, if not, I guess we'll go to our commissions. Beautification is nothing yet. Meetings will be forthcoming. So, leave it at that. Fourth of July?
Yes, as far as the Fourth of July, we've chosen a vehicle for the giveaway on the Fourth of July weekend. The commission has wanted to accept a two thousand thirteen Chevy Camaro from Dolly Chevrolet in Peatone at the price of twenty-three eight five four. But there'll be some commissions coming off of there yet, some buyer incentives coming off of that. So, it'll be less than that at this, at this time. What I'd like to do at this time, if there are no questions, I'd like to make a motion, like to consider the award of bid for the purchase of a two thousand thirteen Chevy Camaro from Dolly Chevrolet in the amount of twenty-three eight forty-five.
Second.
Just a correction. This question? Yeah.
The minutes that I, or the thing that I have in front me says twenty-three thousand eight fifty-four.
Yes, sir. Did I?
Is it eight forty-five or eight fifty-four?
I did. Eighty-five. I'm sorry.
Eight.
Yeah.
And the second thing, it's on the agenda of the public seat. You can have a vote to decide. It's just a little camera.
And there's some incentives coming off that yet before we pick it up, so...
So, that will not be the final figure, is that correct?
Ryan, did you want to make it as not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
What is, what is the right value? What is the value? Right, is it twenty, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-four?
Fifty-four.
Okay, yeah.
Not to exceed that amount?
Right, right.
Is that your motion? You want to correct that?
Yeah, that's okay. I'll correct my second.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion or questions? None, roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Fulmer?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Clearing?
Yes.
Anything else on Fourth of July?
That completes my report.
Okay, Aylards?
Nothing to report as of now. We're still waiting the next meeting.
Okay. Youth Commission?
Yeah, we had, since our last meeting, we've had two events. We had the daddy-daughter dance, which was extremely successful. We had a final count of one hundred and sixty-eight. And then, just on Saturday, we had our mom-son eighties dance. Felt like I was back in high school, seeing all the moms dressed in the eighties. It was kind of wild. But, and it was actually kind of funny. The number was only three higher than daddy-daughter. It was one seventy-one. So, it was, it was steady, consistent. A lot of participation. It was good. And that's about it. We got the, on April thirteenth, we have our youth commission fundraiser. That's about it.
I have one question. I doubt about it. One would you like to answer?
Yes, I was just going to ask the same.
I discussed it with...
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. Is that it, huh?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, we'll go to our committees then. Finance?
Nelson? Thank you. In your packet, I think, three pages, four pages. The first page has all the accounts, including the committee's special accounts. Just under two million dollars in the main accounts. Any questions about any of those numbers or any of the accounts? The next two pages are the checks that I've written. One of the various accounts, close one hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred eight and seventy-three cents. Any questions about any of those bills? And then the last page is a copy of the cover letter that went out to the bank, a soliciting proposals from to refinance just slightly over seven hundred thousand dollars for the water tank. And they gave them criteria. And there's a pretty good sized packet of information we gave to them, including the standard force rating and some audit pages and a five-year plan and so forth. I personally delivered those, and I've received a couple of calls back. They're working on them. And I'm sure I'll get other questions of yourself or Bob. We getting questions about, you know, information they need to put together a proposal.
Is there a duty for other proposals?
No, I didn't. I figured equal first. I'd start making phone calls to them. Now, the kind of information for each person, I deliver the two. And they prefer so, I'll start making phone calls, see where they are, if they are going to put together proposals and so forth.
If they don't, you got to get a letter from them as a no bid.
Say it again.
If they don't, we should get a letter from them as a no bid, to make sure that there's no misunderstanding. And then, until we get that, we shouldn't be opening up the proposals. We should keep it closed until we get all final bids.
They didn't ask for necessarily sealed bids, and they come to me, but I certainly don't disclose any of them to anyone else. Typically, when I ask for CD rates or any else, I just go to the banks. Here's what we want, here's the amount, and make the time. Giving you the best offer, and don't go back and say, you got PDS and so forth. They've gotten to know me well enough that I'm saying that's, it was your best shot the first time. Any questions or comments about, about the letter or what we're doing with the banks? Up the top, I listed all the banks. I went to see there, five of them. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Nelson.
Any other questions for Nelson? If not, I make a motion approving the treasurer's report and the financial report for the prior month.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion or questions? None, roll call.
Clearing?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Fulmer?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
The various reports for the month of January was also included in our report. And then the bills for the month of February are also included. They came to us under separate cover and provided at our tables. One of the key things you'll notice, we've already received a hundred tons of rock salt as part of our state bid. That'll give us a longer duration for next year, seeing this was a light year. Any other big ones out there, Bob, we have to worry about?
Yeah, we're paying Brighton Bulkers, who's installing on the Jackson Street line, I think. That's in there. I think it was fifty-eight dollars. And then we're paying the IPRF. We got audited on our work this time, because of our slimy number of claims, they managed to squeeze more payroll out of us. So, we're going to have to pay a four thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollar charge on our two thousand twelve policy.
Is this one?
Yes. Now that we have some new complaints, we're going to be watching this like that.
We've only had four claims.
Oh, okay.
So, who are they charging? Move on. There's no questions. I make a motion approving the bills for the month of February in a total of one hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
Motion seconded approving the bills that's presented.
Was that a lot, right?
Hundred forty-six thousand, what?
Hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
I thought you said eighty-three.
Any other questions? None, roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Fulmer?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Semansky?
Epstein?
Eric?
Yes.
Clearing?
Yes.
The next item on our list, and we've seen it before, is concerning the municipal code went out to Title VII, of many to go. The code committee has gone through this. Title VII goes over miscellaneous items, including hazardous substance response recovery and the mandated smoking ban of the state. So, I make a motion amending Title VII of the municipal code.
Ordinance number eleven seventy-seven.
Second.
Motion and seconded approving the ordinance eleven seventy-seven. Discussion or questions on that? None, roll call.
Clearing?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Fulmer?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Just to give you an update, we've, Bob, Paul, and the department heads, and myself, met Saturday. It's the second of March. It was five hours of meetings to go over the village budget. And with some comments provided to Bob, we will have a workshop, which is scheduled at six PM, Monday, March twenty-fifth. And I will go through the budget. I recommend everybody review the budget. It was provided to us under separate cover. We will not be going line by line. We'll be going by group. So, if anybody has any comments, make them. If there's adjustments, those also. If you see where we should cut, or if you think we need to add, we do plan on walking out of that meeting with a balanced budget. So, just recommend everybody be prepared. The next item on the list is concerning the constellation rates for the year of May of two thousand thirteen through May of two thousand and fourteen. While the electric rates are going up, we're going to now be at, in around about point zero four two compared to what we pay now, which is about point zero three seven, or three eight. Looking back at our, what we would be paying if we did not lock in, as early as we did, we'd be at zero point four three. So, between four three and three seven is a huge difference. So, we believe by locking in now, it's going to also stem some of our costs. This is more of an update of what's going on with that. There was another item that came up. Public Safety Committee met with the chief and Lieutenant Emerson to go over some ideas based on what we believe the police department needs to take action on concerning the results of Sandy Hook and other areas. We believe we should be increasing the capability of the police department. To achieve that, we're looking at doing a line item transfer of forty-five hundred dollars to address the rapid deployment issues that Lieutenant Emerson came up with with the chief. There is a memo inside, Bob, is that included in here, to go over some of the items that Lieutenant Emerson found. And the bottom line is, we are looking at the police fund internally and using the remaining heads of the budget to provide the forty-five hundred dollars to support the procurement of the rapid deployment issues. So, I make a motion for a resolution authorizing a line item transfer in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars to address rapid deployment issues.
That's Resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh five. Second. Case motion. What's that?
Using that five hundred dollars from...
Oh, yeah, I seen that. I seen that. But one quick question. On this ammo, and I understand there's a delay on that. We probably won't get this ammo for quite some time, is that correct?
That's, that's...
Will that be in next fiscal year possibly?
It would be in the next fiscal year.
Well, you're going to carry over that.
We have to cover it.
That's what I'm saying, because I understand there's a waiting period on that. Is that correct?
Right. At least six months is what we're expecting.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, because the items in this resolution are usually, in six days, and they're available. The ammunition, they're going to order. But there's eight thousand in the budget next year for it. So, it's got fourteen months to be due.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other questions? Motion and seconded. Okay, with that, roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Fulmer?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Clearing?
Yes.
Last item, and I asked Bob to put this on the agenda so that we're all aware of it, and also the public. As we know, the state of Illinois is in dire straits, and they have now started pounding on the villagers' door, as other municipalities. The Will County Government League has been tracking what's been going on downstate and is wise enough to inform all the different municipalities of exactly how much the government's planning on taking out of their pocket. The local income tax revenue that is supposed to be provided to the different municipalities, the government or the governor has decided in this proposed budget to remove twenty percent of what is the, at least for the village of Beecher, eighty-six thousand or eighty-one thousand, five, eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars from our general fund. Unfortunately, that means we will have a negative if they decide to go through with this. While it has not been passed to date, we do need to be aware of it. We've always been trying to make sure that if there's any shortfalls in front of us, we are prepared and set up just blind. So, I asked Bob to put this in here so that we are aware of exactly what's going on with the state of Illinois. Our budget is based on being complete with what we know to be true until the state decides to take the twenty thousand, or twenty percent. If they take the twenty percent, we have eighty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars in escrow to hedge the state taking it. But keep in mind, it's a one-shot deal. So, if they do this next year, it's going to be another eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars out of our pocket. So, sooner or later, the state's got to take care of themselves instead of going after the municipality. So, more to be aware of on that end of that report, man.
Mr. Chairman, it's a, it's a moving target. It was now, what it says, no, I only want to take eleven dollars and twenty cents for cap, and so then even five, fifty. I wouldn't panic yet. There's a lot of negotiating that has to be done.
It's until they pass it, we won't know.
Right. But at least we have that hedge number in our budget to cover any state shortfalls that they might unfold.
And again, this is just the start.
The city of Chicago would have lost three hundred and eighteen million dollars if this would have went through. Don't think that would ever happen, because the mayor up there...
Sometimes you hope the big guys fight for you.
Huh?
Sometimes you hope the big guys fight for you.
Yeah. I don't know if this would be proper. Is something like this just to educate our residents of what the state is possibly doing to those funds, taking it away, not taking it away, or whatever the case be, in our newsletter? In other words, where does this money go?
Yep.
Does it come back?
The difficulty with our newsletters, it's a timely piece. By the time the newsletter gets printed and sent out, the information is inactive. By the time I printed this, we had official notice on Thursday from the government league, we were taking one five. Today, it becomes fifty. So, I hate to put something out here, but someone could say...
I understand that. Let's leave out the dollar amounts. But I think, educate the public of what is happening and what could happen if the state does it. So, in other words, the money is collected, the money goes here, and then the money comes back. And there's a threat that they may take that money away. And if that money is taken away, it's going to have a drastic cut against our budget. That's all I'm saying. I realize your dollar amounts could change. It may never happen. But I think what's going to happen is if it does, does come down to it, and all of a sudden, the state says, I'm going to do this, and then we're going to ask our residents to hurry up and write a letter opposing it, they're going to be already educated if we do it that way. Otherwise, how are we going to get the word out real quick to get it done?
Unfortunately, that's how these budgets are done in Springfield. They're done at eleven hour on May thirtieth.
Okay, it's just a thought.
I think the best bet is, what we can do as trustees, which is something I've done, is call our local state reps, our senators, and encourage our residents to do the same thing. Reach out to them. They're our representatives down there in Springfield. We need to let them know, which I have done personally. I called them both and said that I think this is absolutely ridiculous, and it should not be stood for. And that's their job, to be there to stand up for the rest of us. So, I think that's, I think that's the best thing we can do.
I have one idea. Maybe the outgoing bill of president could put a note, a newsletter with every decision. So, it's not coming from the staff, it's coming from other officials.
I don't know if you, they all get the Illinois Municipal League emails, correct? All the trustees get that? You can, you can, on your own, I encourage you to do that. I have done that. I mean, with my state rep, I let her know my feelings on certain issues. And I think you ought to be doing the same thing. I mean, that's, that's what you're here for. We've done in the past, and I'm sure we'll do in the future. But again, the idea is the more contact that we make, the better off we'll be. And I think if we just educate them somehow, that we want to pull a switch to say, now is the time to call. They're educated ahead of time, is all I'm trying to do. However we do it, I don't, I don't know. Maybe there isn't enough room in this newsletter, I don't know. But I think educate the public ahead of time, or our residents ahead of time, of how this works is not a bad idea. They pulled the same stunt on our EPA permits. I mean, all at once, wham, bam, we got a ten thousand dollar bill. You pay it, whether you like it or not. And we had to. We didn't pay it.
And we had to. We didn't pay it, and we got fined for paid it or something. So it's just things happen. I'm telling you. Anything else, Mr. Chairman? Okay. Okay, we'll go with the public safety?
Yeah, the police department monthly report from February is enclosed for your review. Update on school safety and security issues, chief?
Now, we had a rapid deployment field training exercise February third. We did that exercise at grade school. We also had one on February seventeenth at the junior high. We are gonna schedule our third one, which will be held at high school. And we are in the process of getting the equipment, the supplies for our rapid deployments of equipment. And we are moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you, chief. Any questions of the chief or myself? If not, that completes my report.
Yes.
One question. Are all the markings signed up on Dutch American?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, the Dutch American purge. The signs are up, and I did talk with all the businesses along Dutch American. They all felt that Goldie is probably gonna endure most of it because of the truck parking. But they also said, if we get them to park on one side, that will greatly help. But there still is a problem with the semis backing it. We got some that are good drivers and some that are bad drivers, and they said that kind of creates a problem. So we're gonna work on that, too.
Good? Okay, streets and alleys.
We're to consider awarding a bid to Iroquois paving in the total amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents for the repairs to Cardinal Creek Boulevard Bridge, which is in the amount of seventy-three thousand, five ninety-two ninety-six, which would come from an escrow account. And the twenty thirteen road resurfacing program in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. We did receive five bids. Bid tabulation sheets and the project location maps were enclosed in our packets for review. This project is one thousand over what we will have in reserve cash come May first to complete the roadwork and forty-six thousand dollars less than engineer's estimate, which is basically what we were hoping for, that it would come in much less than what he had predicted, which the committee thought that would happen, and it did. It's recommended that we award this bid to this particular contractor. He was approved, I believe is the right name. Worst-case scenario, we may have to short-term borrow from General for thirty days for that one thousand dollars to cover the total project cost. Timing of the project will determine if we have to do that or not. Are there any questions?
The cost for the bridge is coming out of the MGM account?
Yes, and I wanna make sure that we have this motion down correctly. That seventy-three, five ninety-two ninety-six is coming MGM's road. And one forty-six, one eighty-nine, point nine three is coming out of the infrastructure account. And Greg, was that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion?
What will we what will we have left in MGM then?
You had what? Well, you had your report. What, two hundred and eighteen thousand was in there?
Yeah.
Take seventy thousand off, seventy-three thousand.
Two hundred and seventeen thousand.
How much?
Two hundred and seventeen thousand.
Yeah, it was two hundred and some thousand. So yeah, so that's gonna come off in there. And it's gonna bring it down.
But we knew that was gonna be a huge investment on that bridge.
But we've got pretty well everything taken care of in MGM as far as infrastructure at the time, but we don't know what's gonna happen. We got storm sewer cleaning.
Storm sewer cleaning is the only thing I got.
Yeah.
Well, if you if you look at the recommendation from H.R. Green, the riprap needs to go on that around the area that bridge, otherwise you'll have failure of the substructure.
And you're gonna have bridge inspection every year.
Yeah, you're now registered with the state.
Three grand for a bridge inspection. That's about all.
The one question that I, yeah, would be in our discussion, they're taking the, I know there's some bushes or something starting up on the one side. Why are they going to take those out?
They're worrying about the wing wall being undermined.
Understand, but the roots stabilize the ground. I wouldn't take them out. I would I would spray them or something like that and keep them there and keep the root structure there because that's where all your erosion comes from. You start taking the roots out of the bank, and when the prick goes up and dirt goes.
I don't think it's the bank that they're going after. It's the substructure. They're worrying about the base of the wing wall failing.
I understand, but the waters waters run on those wing walls.
Right, and they're they're gonna put in riprap along those because it should've been done underneath that bridge, and it wasn't.
Why don't we question the engineer, the job engineer, and we'll bring that up to him, and then we can go from there.
That's the only thing. I seen in the proposal was was pulling out all those those bushes. I guess we always want the root system in there. Okay, we got a motion and seconded. Any other discussion? None, roll call?
I'm sorry, who made the motion seconded?
Greg and I.
Yeah.
Greg made the motion, Brian seconded.
Okay, thank you. And the seventy-three thousand amount was MGM and the other amount was public infrastructure account. Clearing?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Cardinal Creek Boulevard Bridge inspection. H.R. Green has completed its inspection and submitted the report to IDOT for registration of the bridge and to certify its safety. The two items that we were just discussing, which the engineers want the village to address at the time, is riprapping between the wing walls and the creek bed for erosion control and removing brush growth along the walls with roots, which can push up, push the walls out, which we will address. Down the road, we may have also pressure ground for the bridge where there is water penetration and there is rust. There was a report enclosed for review. Ash board, we're in the process of putting a packet together for residents that need to get rid of ash board, which is on private property because we do not do it. Information article will also be written in newsletter. Village is positioned that we will move trees on village property and parkways when those three trees die or if there's another reason to do so for the safety and so on. Cost to save the tree may exceed the useful life of the tree. The village will also not notify homeowners if it comes to our attention that a dead tree on private property is causing a nuisance.
How many how many ash trees do we have on public driveway?
Two hundred and eighty-four.
Two hundred and eighty-four.
Cause I'm our old seven tree in the forty.
I asked that question when we were in the finance discussion. It shocked me, too.
Yeah, now, some of them are small. The big ones, the buddies worry about. The small ones are nothing.
We're gonna we're gonna take them down even though they're not infected.
No, no, no.
No, we're not taking anything. We decided, the board had actually decided probably what, a year ago, I think, to basically say a wait-and-see.
Right.
Attitude. And then with the sidewalk program came into play where we were, the sidewalk may have to be replaced because of the roots of the tree. Even then, we decided that we would do a temporary prayer repair until that tree had to come down, which if it was the case of the ash board, we could maybe take a look at at that time if that tree is infected and the sidewalk maybe would take it down. But basically, it's a wait-and-see until we have to take them down because of that reason. I have expressed a concern that if, in fact, we are suddenly infected and we have to take down two hundred and eighty trees all at once, that's gonna have a devastating effect on the budget. So that's why we're sort of watching, being careful. But most of the trees, I understood, and Buddy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, most of the trees we could take down in-house. Correct?
There's a lot of, yeah, like you said.
So it's basically, it's gonna hit our budget for logistics, but it's not gonna be a lot of where, I don't, you know, so we're gonna have to pay someone to do it except for the stumps, probably. So we're sort of keeping an eye on it, and we've learned of new processes and even the new processes that we've learned about. Still, we think the better option right now is to wait and see and not not panic yet at this particular point in time.
Yeah, the problem is the village can't afford to save two hundred and eighty-four trees. And we don't wanna get in a situation where they pick and choose which parkway trees we're gonna save. But if residents wanna try to save their parkway tree or a tree on their own property, put this package together, they can go hire a vendor to try to save their tree.
And that's through injection?
Yes, you have to do it every year or the other year, depending on chemically by. And it's still at a hundred percent D M P. It's kind of like Dutch on disease, remember they used to spray those trees and hope they could save them. And all you're doing with those ash trees is finding time, because eventually the bug is gonna get them. So you could prevent the bug in the tree by using the comb. But for us to treat twenty-four trees, it's costly.
And you can't just dispose of the tree. It's gotta be.
Yeah, once that's gotta be disposed of.
It's gotta be disposed of a certain way because if you do it incorrectly, you're just letting it propagate.
Believe burning is the only way, isn't it, Dan?
Well, no, you can chip it, but it's gotta be.
It's gotta stay in condition.
Yeah, it has to stay within a quarantine area, which you're in and it hasn't for a long time. Can't take them out here. Your chipper brings it down to.
Any other questions on the ash board, little booger? We're to consider a motion authorizing the replacement of the street's name signs and preserves at Cardinal Creek subdivision MGM to federal standards using the escrow funds in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-two cents. This is only the sign portion itself. It's not the pole. Villagers received a proposal from Hall Signs to replace the existing one and a half, one point five street name sign plates with the four-inch squares using the same poles and brackets. This will continue our trend of sign replacements throughout the entire village. Sixteen signs appear to be decalled onto the sign faceplate and are peeling off. We plan to replace both poles and signs in Nantucket Cove, Mount Avonal in twenty fifteen or when additional housing gets constructed. MFT funds will be used in Hunter's Chase, Hunter's Chase West, and Prairie Park in twenty thirteen. Hunter's Chase East, Prairie Crossings, and Prairie Crossing South have their sign replaced in twenty fourteen. At that particular point in time, this will complete the sign replacement program for the entire village. There was a proposal in our packet as well.
Is this just to put the signs the same size as what we have now?
The new ones, yes, and it's in line with the new federal guidelines.
Same poles.
Well, you could reuse the existing poles. They're almost similar to what we were, we put in the rest of the town.
Yeah.
They're smaller, but there's no sense in replacing.
They've got the same shape.
That's what I'll do is is eventually the goal is to have one sign stocked. All these we have to order in these because of the letters. But rather than have three different types of signs in the stock, whatever the case may be, we're trying to leave it there. There's no question, but I'd like to make the motion to purchase one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents from the escrow account for the street's name signs and reserves at Cardinal Creek from Hall Signs.
Second.
Okay. Motion and seconded. Replacing the signs in MGM. Discussion or questions? One quick question. Those poles aren't quite as high as the ones that we put up. Is that gonna be a problem, do you think? I mean, you you can reach these signs just by walking in and tapping. I just.
We we bait that ball for going and replace those poles would be cost prohibitive.
Okay.
I mean, at most.
I just want to.
Every sign in the subdivision, you're all eighteen hundred bucks. Replacing one pole is eight hundred bucks.
I just, you know, like I said, they're much lower, much lower.
We talked about that.
Okay.
This is the cheapest way to.
All right. Okay, with that, roll call.
Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Clearing?
Yes.
Okay.
That is my report, I'm sorry.
Okay, sewer and water?
Water department and sewer department monthly reports are enclosed for review. Along with the water billing register for the months of January and February are enclosed for review. Maxwell Street water main update. All the services have been connected and the new main is in service. And restoration will occur when weather improves. Sewer plant operations update. The operator of record has now been changed to John Suedeo of Baxter and Woman. And Buddy, you just had the meeting with him this morning. You wanna just kinda give the board an update as to how that went?
I think it went pretty smoothly. It looks like the transition should go smoothly. He'll be here Tuesday to start, you know, beginning to it and implementing. I'm not sure about procedures, but I know there's gonna be some changes in the paperwork. There's gonna be a little bit of a different format that he's gonna be using with, you know, the monthly operating report to the village. And he's gonna also be providing a little report as to whatever recommendations he might decide or any foreseeable costs. And that's a good thing. We walked through the plant. Seemed to be very comfortable with it. I was pretty happy with it, and I don't see any bad happens happening. So I think we're on track with the.
Yeah, he's gonna be giving the board a monthly report. He's gonna do the sewer part. That's one last thing, Buddy, I have to do. I'm happy with it.
Okay. Consider a proposal from M.E. Simpson to leak detect the entire village, except MGM and Mount Avonal, which was already done last year within the next sixty days at a cost not to exceed nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. This will involve leak detection of over forty-five miles of main, water mains throughout the village and all the service lines. It'll be testing hydrants and valves also for leaks. This all kinda started with the wanting to get where we're gonna be doing the new roads checked. That is done. And they found no leaks. But with this this pricing and the money's there in the budget, in the capital account, I think it's appropriate that we go ahead and just get the whole town done. We've all seen what one little leak can do. We had that card. How quickly those gallons can add up. I think this is a good little insurance plan. I mean, hopefully, they come back and tell us everything's tight as can be, but we'll see. So I'll make a motion to contract M.E. Simpson to leak detect the entire village within the next sixty days at a cost not to exceed nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second. Okay, motions are made and seconded to consider the proposal from Simpson for leak detection. Any discussion or questions? If none, roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Coleman? Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Okay, other buildings and properties?
Consider authorizing the village attorney to draft an ordinance establishing a cancer memorial commission in order to be able to provide contribution letters for tax-free donations by use of the village's sales tax exempt number and to provide liability coverage for volunteers working on the project. On village property, the group organized to install the cancer memorials, requesting that it be granted commission status in order to complete its mission of installing a memorial on Miller Street and Fireman's Park. This was brought up at our last meeting, and we were trying to figure out, you know, how to do it. And Barb Hodgett talked to me and she said, you know what, why, I think she talked to Nelson, too. And we talked about it, and this makes sense to do, to bring the commission into the village umbrella and to get it done. It's it's being constructed on village property anyway. It's a commission that is part of the village. So that's what I'm requesting, and that's what the group is requesting to go underneath this status. Any questions?
Yeah, I got I got a quick question. Scott?
Yes.
Will this commission have anything to do with the Tractors for Cure fundraiser?
Totally different.
Okay, because I was gonna say with liquor license and and, you know, what I'm saying.
Right.
Okay.
This is totally separate, and that's what was messed up multiple times in the newspaper because it brought in Tractors for Cure.
Okay.
It brought in that. It's totally separate.
I think I think Tractors for, because Benhausen was doing it, I think it was more, he was donating money to start the commission. It wasn't being done as part of his Tractors for Cure.
Okay.
And, you know, yeah, it is a donation.
A donation.
Cancer Society is Tractors for the Cure. Our commission is to build a Ribbon of Hope garden in Fireman's Park, so it's totally separate.
If we decide to do, decide to do details, I don't remember.
Yeah, that's that's another thing.
He's trying to draft, he's gonna ask me that, so I'll go ask him now.
Okay, the chairman?
Not to exceed numbers.
Do we need a chairman? Do we need four officers, chairman, vice, secretary, treasurer?
Okay, chairman Dean Benhausen, vice chairman myself, treasurer Chris Semansky, and secretary Barb Hodgett.
I don't need names, I just need titles.
Okay.
And how many members?
What do we have, Chris?
There's still four in there. So. Fireman from the Cancer Society, Concerned Action Home.
We're talking about six? Just put it on to.
Seven, Scott.
Seven, just put it on to exceed.
Do you have officers, the seven?
Yes.
You don't. So you have four officers, three, not ours.
Right.
Do you want it written for any more in case of?
Not to exceed ten or something like that.
Yeah, well, over something like that, you did that on the youth commission.
Yeah, and you might might set it at just.
You might have someone that really gets fired up in this thing and then.
Right.
Nine?
Okay, let's go with ten.
Ten. Go eleven.
Eleven.
Not to exceed. I mean, it's just.
However, any, you know, you want.
You can still have ten and never get to eleven. I mean, it's it's just a not to exceed.
Right. So I'd like to make that motion to to establish a cancer memorial commission.
Second. Question. Motion, oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Motion is seconded. Discussion.
We're not approving names tonight because that's actually. We're not approving names tonight, because that's actually-
No, we're approving the establishment.
So I make sure that-
Okay.
It's just establishment commission.
Right.
With that, roll call.
Leary?
Yes.
Home?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Demansky?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Leary?
Second. Yes.
Okay, number two and three are under process. The address of the village park chief, did we ever get an address on Cardinal Creek Boulevard? Not yet. Okay, we're working on the signs and also the benches. Spring newsletter update, the spring newsletter has, has been scheduled for mailing on Wednesday, April tenth. This is one day after the election, but before the youth commission fundraiser the following Saturday night. So there can be a promotion of this activity in the newsletter. The newsletter will feature a new refuse contract and rates, mosquito control program and the ash pour information. So if there's anything else that you guys would like to include, or July will be there.
About the new commission we just formed? Information about that?
I guess we can, I don't know if I want all this officer.
No, I think you need to indicate that it's there.
It's there.
And what they're trying to achieve.
No name, no name, just say we, we form a new commission for this project that's going.
Yeah, we could, we could announce the-
And you can even have the picture that was, it's already been published in a paper.
If you provide the, the, the word.
Sure. Scott has nothing else to do.
If there's a photo, give me a photo. But see, I don't want, I-
Right, it's a thought.
I don't want any commissioners yet, I can't put that photo on screen.
No, it's just, it's, it's a photo of what they're doing.
Oh, that'd be cute, yeah.
Yes.
And you form the commission to do whatever, that's it.
Okay, you were taking the same thing as I was.
Mm-hmm.
No.
Cause you know, again, we can put the rendering in there, what we're doing. And, you know, we're looking, we're always looking for donations, we're looking for corporate sponsors, we're looking for brick, you know, sales, there's benches for sale, or for sale, donations for benches.
Do you have that group of folks in the P D F?
Yes.
For me?
We do, okay.
J.K.
That's under the, uh?
J.K.
The wife just came.
Alright. It's good that you know the pecking order, Bob.
She's the publisher, I just write articles, she does all the fancy stuff.
That's my report.
Is it? Okay, we're, we're, this evening we have L.G. Sims, we met with him about three weeks ago, I believe it was, and he asked to come to our board meeting, and we're gonna give you an opportunity to tell us what's going on. We got one more committee to go through before we go to mine. We'll do it in between the last committee and then you can have your presentation, okay? Okay, planning and building?
Results of the 28th, 2013 PZC workshop, sorry I wasn't able to attend, I was out of, out of town for a funeral. Dutch American silo variance request and request for variance for a solid fence of five foot at a total height of six foot at sixteen fifty-five Fox Hound were approved for public hearing on March twenty-eighth. Can you give us a little update on what happened at that meeting?
In the silo, there was very little discussion about it, because it appeared that most of the issues were addressed prior to them coming to the PZC for workshop. The fence, on the other hand, and I want to speak for the PZC members that are here tonight, was a wide range of opinions on the fence. And the petitioner was very patient in standing there and explaining his, his application. But, you know, Jim, chair of the meeting, I would refer to him, explaining what happened.
Well, the petition came before us, he had photos of his backyard, he had a fence picked up that he wanted to put in. He had signatures from numerous neighbors, twenty, thirty neighbors that had not objected to him wanting to put a fence up. Basically, his, his thought process was that he wanted a solid fence for privacy at this point, not a pool enclosure, and that he needed a six foot height because of a variance in landscaping to his neighbors. We had a lively discussion, George and myself, about various issues concerning the appropriateness of that. And, and we turned, we told petitioner very candidly that he was facing a difficult variance because of what he was asking for, was really applying correctly in the basic order. But if he did have some extenuating circumstances, then if he wished to continue pursuit with a public hearing, we're gonna stand in his way. We, at this point, we're, we're still not yet earning his, his proposal. And he decided he wanted to continue, spend his money, and, and a public hearing.
If I may add, you know, we didn't have a full board either, so there's only four, it was verified, I'm right. And I should point out, it's a five foot solid, what you can see through on the top, it's not a six foot solid. So, and we felt, you know, he made his case, and he wants to have the hearing for, for the public and then a commission vote. I think it's been made clear to him, it's probably been off the table, but that's his decision.
Thank you. Item number two and three, the building department co-enforcement and the, building department and the co-enforcement, of course, are closed for your review. Item number four, updated the UIC graduate research project on village capital and operations needs in two thousand thirty-three. The first step of this process was for the graduate to determine a target population figure for two thousand thirty-three. Enclosed was a report in which they projected a population of nine thousand seventy-eight. I feel this is a good projection, since our new sewer plant expansion will take us to one point two MGD, which is a population equivalent of twelve thousand. However, industry and commercial use infiltration absorbs some of this capacity, so nine thousand is a pretty good accurate assumption. And then a report was imposed for your review. And that ends my report.
Okay. With that, as I stated before, our state rep came down about a month ago, maybe, so, and he asked to be, he could come to our meeting, I think he's talking about having possibly office hours once a month down here and down at Troyer Bowl, and we're receptive to that. And I want you to tell us what's going on.
Sure.
How you're gonna deal with problems, and your diverse group that you've got, you know?
Go ahead.
I mean, you're, he goes all the way down to Mo Matts, I believe, right?
Yes, sir.
And Far West, Kankakee?
Goldie, Goldie, or Pete, we got Peatone on the, on the western border.
Yeah.
And State Line on the, on the eastern border, up northern border going to Seventy-third, Seventy-third Street in Chicago. But again, we, you know, on behalf of President, Mr. Barbara, the village administrator, he'd have my back to, to, to-
You wanna sit down over there, that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
We, we, we had a very lively discussion about, you know, things we were trying to accomplish, we were gonna accomplish together. And we did meet, at that time, before the governor had introduced his budget for a year, since the, now the, now the budget proposal's been out, we've, we've had correspondence back and forth about some of the impact on, on the, on the village and, and local governments in particular. We, our sponsored legislation will make sure that any local government distributed funds, those funds are, we expedite those funds to, to local municipalities as Minister of Defense Anthony Duke.
Oh yeah, Anthony, yeah, right, I see that.
So we're, 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 we're working to try and make sure that we're, we're taking into consideration what our municipalities are looking for, what, what needs you've got out there. I wanna thank, you know, village president and administrator for the lively discussion we did have, because it gave me the opportunity to kinda figure out what, what the agenda's gonna be and how we can help. We, we had a very lively discussion, I've been appointed the vice chairman of Mass Transit. And one of the things we kinda talked about was how we're, how we can integrate some of the, the area out here and the plan for Mass Transit for the area. And how we can make sure that we're, we're helping to get individuals to, to jobs and have to give jobs to individuals. And I think that was, that's very necessary at this point in time. But we wanna make sure that we're respecting and acknowledging the unique nature of the village. And I think that's a very important thing. So I, I'm gonna thank you for, for that opportunity to come out and have those discussions. Cause I think, as we move along, the, the session is moving hot head. We're, we're right, we're moving towards our, our meeting deadline, meeting deadlines coming up, the twenty-second of March. So that's, that's two, two, two weeks away. I'm actually leaving, when I leave here, I'm gonna go home, get packed, and head out, and I'm heading out for Springfield about six in the morning tomorrow, and now we've got a full week ahead of us. But we, we're gonna move towards our meeting deadline, the end of March, or before, we take, we take a break for it. We'll be in session for a couple of weeks. It's, it's important for us, I was just sitting here listening to some of the discussions of the board, and it's always, it's always important for me to, to hear those discussions, you know, cause that, it allows me when I'm in Springfield to say, this, these are things that are important to the village, and support the village in future. So I think it's very important to, that, that's one of the reasons I wanted to come. And just wanted to come here, what the discussions are, what kind of issues are being presented to the board, what kind of questions and concerns that members of the board might have, or the referred citizens might have. Because as I'm, as I'm in Springfield, I wanna make sure that I'm always represented. So that's, and again, I just wanna come and have a long presentation. We'll do, as, again, as we, as we do those office hours, we'll have more of an opportunity to interact. That's, that's, that's really what's important for, for me, is we have those, have the ability to have those office hours where we sit and talk about specific pieces of legislation that come before, come before the general assembly, or specific issues that come before the general assembly, so I know what's important. So I, again, I wanted to come down, say hello, thank all of you for your support from, from before and support going forward, and I think we're gonna do some more things together. So, if anybody has any questions for Mr. Mayor with your-
I've got one right away to start with.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this airport legislation that you, your shell bill that you introduced, what, what's behind this? Are you trying to set up a airport authority, or what, what, what's gonna curtail with that legislation?
The thought process was to have some discussion where, as we talked about before, I'm, I'm keen on local control. I want the individuals that are directly impacted by that, by the airport, I want them to have a say and a hat to be a part of. So that was the thought process, in talking with the, the localities, the executive's office, and we, I wanted to get some legislation out there, we have not drafted full language yet, but that was, for me, that was the thought process. The thought process was to have, have for, have us, have our, have our, our district, our, our, our localities to have a say in what happened there. So that was, that was my thought process.
And you understand that the FAA will not come up with a record of decision until there is an airport authority established and, and, and it's down in Springfield where it's gotta start, so.
Very aware, very aware, so that, again, that's why, that's why we're, that's why we're giving it more.
And again, we'd like to have seats on that authority, uh, for the communities' role.
I, I can tell you right now, this, this state representative will not be supporting legislation that does not allow a path from the city.
We, we don't necessarily wanna run the airport, we just wanna make sure everything is controlled that goes around it.
Absolutely.
And, and one other thing, I don't know if you're aware of, but they're doing a Calumet corridor study, the South suburban mayors and managers, and they asked us to be part of that, and I, that's on my agenda later on. I think it's very important for this community to be a part of it, if the airport is gonna be built, because there is a proposed bypass to the, to the west of the village. And to me, that's gonna be very instrumental as far as the airport, if it is built, that we have an eastern access. Because the plans on, the plans that the, the state has right now, they really don't show a primary entrance to the airport on the east side, and I think it's gonna be very instrumental to make it successful, you know?
Well, you, when, when, looking at Household twenty-five twenty-two, which is another, another bill I've introduced and I'm working on, it's called the Investment Memorial Act. And in particular, it looks at reading of land, and how from, particularly for communities like ours that are bordered by neighboring states that have tried to attract businesses from our communities to take them into neighboring states, to try and make sure that we are focusing on attracting businesses and incentivizing businesses in our communities to grow in extent. But in also looking at it from a regional planning standpoint, as we work with, you know, the government's policy of social planning, the state, state part of transportation, and having a partnership where we're moving forward in a, in a, in a manner that is collective and is collaborative. So that's part of what we're working on with that legislation, the first draft of that legislation. The cost of the program was more than I would, I wanted it to be, because we had a package of incentives and taxes and things like that, so the package was a little more, more, more robust than I would like. So that, that's why we did not see that legislation be introduced. We're still, we're working on more drafts of it now, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure that we can get to, get the investment in a program up and running, to get, to get it to where we want it to be. And we have that, that planning component as part of it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a program that's, that's really gonna move the world forward, to the fore. Yes, sir.
The, the other issue that came up, and we took, before you came in, we talked about it during the, uh, our finance committee is considering the local government distributor, distributor fund, where the, the state is looking to assist balancing their budget by going after the municipality's share of that.
That's right.
What's your thoughts on that?
Well, I, again, that's one of the reasons I talked about with the mayor earlier, or earlier on in my comments, about the legislation that I introduced or co-sponsored, that talks about making sure that the local, the local share is protected. Cause you know, I, I understand that in order for you to, in order for the village to do its business, you gotta have that share. And you, and you, you know, you don't want impairments, you don't want delay, you need, you need to run away. So I'm, I'm certainly not in favor of, of a poll that, that out.
Cause I think currently, the payment that we've had so far from the state is, we're up to November, inter income tax. This is March. I mean, granted, if we're getting paid in the rear, it would be February, so we're still behind on that end.
We always will be three months behind. I think, there was, there was legislation, I think Anthony also introduced that, to make those current, which the state has always been three months behind on, on that. Same with the sales tax. But I, I know Anthony was trying to get the payments up, up to speed.
The state's over seven and a half billion dollars behind the bills. If, if, if a state, if a state employee or someone on the state's health insurance plan would go to, go to the doctor today, their doctor would not be paid for next year, March, March of last, three hundred, I'm sorry, March first, three hundred. Last check I had, the, the state's health insurance plan was three hundred and fifty-seven days behind.
That's in our new refuse category.
Yeah.
So, it, it, we're, as part of what, as, as, one of the things I did like about this whole, like, bill before for this budget, was to start, continue to pay down those old bills. I think we've gotta get to a point where we are paying our bills on time, our, our credit rating is the worst in the nation, we have gotta do a better job getting our discoplus. And I think ultimately we're gonna get there, but it's gonna, it's, it's gonna, we have this problem with the credit in the bank.
Just another side note, you know, we borrow off our sales tax to fund some program, and we promise to pay it back. And we're gonna watch that very closely, make sure they do it, if they borrow off our open sales tax. It was a minor amount, six point six billion, but it was the first drop in the bucket that could be a flood. And that's what we have to watch, because that's the silver tax they borrow from, to fund the program. I can't remember what the program was, but it's been funded, it was that sales tax. So we have to watch that, because they can keep borrowing more and more, and all of a sudden, we're just like the financial system, we're broke.
Well, again, that's one of the reasons why it's gonna be important for us to stay in constant contact when, when, as the session progresses, knowing what those issues are, if they're important, having that relationship. Trusty, of course, has done a great job keeping, keeping me in the loop of all the things that are happening down here. So I, I, I think we're, we're gonna have a wonderful relationship between all of us. I'm looking forward to it, and we're gonna say we've done some great things together. Happy fun, no questions.
The, going back to the, the distrib, distributor fund, I know there's probably no way to do this, because something can change every year, but the constant threat that keeps coming up should be addressed. And say, you know what, this is it, it's done, it's over with, let's move on, once the decision is made not to cut our funds. You follow me? In other words, it, it doesn't help us anywhere, okay, it's been quiet for a while, and all of a sudden, this came out of nowhere, and all of a sudden we get hit again. So also, you know, to put it to rest, get it done, get it over with, leave us alone, and then make sure it doesn't happen again, which probably is no guarantee. And then also, I'm not in favor of borrowing any funds from anything that's from us as well, because I had, I don't have faith in the state paying us back. So, and I understand, you know, that, that it's probably done and over with, but, you know, I'm skeptical whether we're ever gonna get that money back. My last thing to you is on pensions, how do you feel about that?
Well, we've gotta get something done on pensions. You know, it's funny, it's funny you mention that, because that's where, that's where I was going next. When you look at the governor's budget proposal for fiscal, for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, the, the revenue growth that's proposed in the budget, the entire, entirety of the revenue projection will be eaten up by the, by the pension, pension contribution. So we, we're gonna have to do something on pensions. What it, what it looks like, it's, it's, it's big. And we're gonna have, you know, we've got every, you have proposals out there, you should raise them, raise the retirement age, you have proposals to increase- And we're going to have, you know, we've got every, we have proposals out there, should raise the, raise the retirement age, we have proposals to increase contributions, they're going to pay. And ultimately, what we're going to get to, we're going to have to get to something that's, one, comprehensive, two, constitutional. Because any, the constitution is very clear that the pension, pension obligations are contractual relationships between the employee and state. So we're going to have to have, we're going to have to have, whatever, whatever we do is going to have to be constitutional. It's going to have to make sense. I was going to have to save the money that's necessary to make, to make a dent in the debt that we've got, and there are the obligations we've got, the over nine billion dollars of our pension systems across all five systems. So in order for us to make sure that we are doing the jobs right, we're going to have to make, we're going to have to make some difficult, difficult decisions. That, that goes from all, from all systems.
Would, would you agree though, with the statement that those that are currently using the pension systems should be left alone, and every changes that you make should be from this date forward?
Well, I, again, that's, that's, when I talk about it being constitutional, you know, there, there are three things to account for. You've got to offer exceptional consideration. So, and for those, and those individuals who are, who are using, who are, or are part of the system now, who are, who are receiving benefits, who are retirees, or who are paid into the system. We're going to, that's, that's where, that's why I talk about the system being consti- with the, the solution being constitutional, that's what I'm talking about. You're going to have to have something that's going to, it's going to have, it's going to match, it's going to match that.
What worries me is that, that still seems to be a question amongst your colleagues, that some say, no, some say.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it's, I think, the discussions that I'm, that I'm, that I'm privy, that I'm part of, that's one of the things that everybody's talking about. And trying to craft a solution that is constitutional. I think everybody's, everybody's concerned about that. Because whatever, whatever solution comes out, we know, I think any of all of us, I think participants, retirees, state, elected officials, everyone understands, it's probably going to be challenged in court. So you want something that can stand up, to stand up to the constitutional challenge. So whatever, whatever we do is going to make sense.
Thank you.
Do you think government should be in control of pensions or administering pensions? Do you think it's better up to each individual?
I certainly think they're, I certainly think they're, they're inflation. You know, at, at the end of the day, you know, employees, they're, they're, they're primary pension employees. Uh, they participate, participating in the system, paid into the system, they're, 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 you know, they're, they're entitled to the, to the, the resource that they pay in, that they should, they should.
Our sound, thank you.
Uh, so again, it's, you know, when you look at salaries of local employees or government employees or surprise second employees, the salaries don't, don't necessarily match. Uh, the, the only benefit that those employees generally had was to have a pension, so. But again, I think, I think we've got to protect all individuals who have.
Understandable, yeah. But I mean, as far as government getting involved and administering and, and going off the pensions, do you think government should be in that, or?
I don't, I don't think there's, no, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Man, I think that, is, is, is there, uh, the decisions that are made always go as correct ones? And, you know, you're not as sure. You know, but I think as I look at the management of the systems, you know, when you look at across all five systems, the.
The impact is happening.
The, the teacher retirement system, state employee retirement system, state university retirement system, the, uh, general assembly retirement system, there's no such thing.
Okay, so it doesn't include downstate police and downstate fire pension?
No, no.
You're talking about the state.
I'm taking, I'm taking the five states, five states. As you, as you look across those systems, the impact, what, what's happened with those systems financially was covered. Benefits have not kept pace, have not kept pace with, with the, with the investments. There was, we have experienced market losses unlike anything, like any of us have ever seen in our lifetime. Uh, and you know, and people, the folks are living.
Life expectancy.
Yeah, so the folks are just living long. So I think there was, it was a perfect storm right now for us, and I think, you know, the state's got to, the state's got to do a better job than that. A lot of our question.
Questions, now is the time to ask.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to discuss pensions a little bit further.
Sure.
I quite don't understand what's taking so long. This problem's existed for five years, we're going to take two weeks off, why don't we sit in a room and get it done?
Well, if, listen, I, I think this, this problem has been there for a long. And it's, it's, the problem you've got, one of the things that, that the House has started to deal with the last several weeks, is going on to weekly orders of the day. And what these weekly orders of the day have done is to, 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 to have, have debate, discussion, involve on specific items relative to the pension, uh, to the pension problem. So last week we debated, uh, well, the week before we debated whether or not raising the retirement age was something that majority members wanted to do. Majority members do not want to do it, so it's, we want to, we want to increase, uh, we want to increase the contributions. You know, I think that's something that members, members could, could accept, but what, at what level? What, what, we want to cap, uh, cap earnings, that was another proposal that was discussed. That was, that seemed, that seemed to get, you know, have a great deal of traction. So I think ultimately, we're going, we're going to get to a point where we're, we're doing what, what I talked about, making sure that the proposals are constitutional, making sure the constitution is, making sure they're going to do exactly what we need to do to solve the problem. So we're, we're, we're going, I don't believe, in my heart of hearts, before we leave Springfield, May thirty-first, that we won't have a solution to this problem. I believe we'll have a solution to this problem. I think we're going to have to, because, yeah, if now, as I talked about earlier, you now see that the, the pension problem is now crowding out everything else. And you, and you can't fully fund education, there's a hundred million dollar cut to the general state in education, because of, because, because revenues are crowding out, the, crowding out everything else. So you're, you're going to have to have a solution. What schools will look like, I'm not sure right now. Uh, I think, I think also, I don't think we need to make, make, we need to make the first ballot.
Another question I have is, uh, where do you stand on the temporary, moving to temporary income tax?
Hmm, that's what I was going to ask.
I have, I've co-sponsored legislation that would call for a graduated income tax. I, I personally believe that our income, our income tax structure does not support our income tax base. We are currently, our, our income tax str- our, our tax structure in Illinois is a easy one. We are, our, our tax structure, we are, we are a, a service-based economy, but our, our, our tax structure is based off of a, a manufacturing system. And I think we've, we've got, we've got to be looking at that. Just one of the reasons why, you know, I've, I've, I'm starting to get into the tax code, trying to see how we can use the tax code to benefit businesses and grow jobs. Uh, because I think we've got to support all of our tax structure.
That's interesting, graduated income tax. Question that becomes is, what's the effective rate, higher or lower? Than three percent we have?
I, I, I think if you use, I think you can, you can, you can, you know, a number of different proposals. You've got, you're saying the three percent, using three, three point five percent, or using existing rates, I think you can, you can have it, you can have differing revenue benefits. Uh, but I think, I think you, I, I think at the very first hurdle we've got to climb, is making sure that we, we get on, we get a constitutional amendment on the ballot that will allow folks to say what they want. And that's, that's essentially what the legislation that I've, I've co-sponsored, will put a constitutional amendment for all over, to say what they want, uh, of graduated income tax or a flat tax.
One last question, where do you stand on school vouchers?
Well, again, I, I, I'm, I am for making sure the schools we've got are the best for. Uh, you know, I've, I've got several pieces of legislation I'm sponsoring right now that would do just that. Uh, from making sure that you, that you cap class size statewide at twenty-seven students, that you, that there was more than a school of holdings in, in the city of Chicago. That we, we do, we put a hundred million dollars in school, in school construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation. I think we've got to have a comprehensive plan about what our schools look like. And, uh, you know, when, we, when we tell our children that the educa- education that they receive is really what's going to set them apart from everyone else, we've got to invest in it. And I'm firmly believing that we've got to, that we do that. And I'm looking forward to it, and I'm actually working on one of my bills this week, or probably working on, we do one of, one of the moratorium bills. If the moratorium goes up, the school, school construction bond corps ends up this, this week, and, uh, the appropriations associated with the school.
That's a very nice answer, you didn't ask the question. Where do you stand on school vouchers?
Well, again, I, 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 I did answer, I said I'm for our school, us having the best schools in the world.
I can do that with vouchers?
Uh, but again, I, I'm, I'm for us having the best schools.
Okay, you're not going to answer the question, that's fine.
That's fine.
You're not going to put yourself on the line for that question.
That's fine.
I understand, I understand spin what I hear.
Yeah, Bob, come on.
Uh, when we met with, uh, Representative Simmons, we discussed two issues that he wanted more details on in writing. And that letter was in your packet, one was on EPA own, and how that all works. And then the second one is streamlining the MFT, use of MFT funds. You take I-DOT out of the equation and treat MFT like the local income tax, give it to the local jurisdictions, and make their auditors affirm that money was used for street work. Because right now, the way it works, we have to get I-DOT to approve the plan, they don't approve the plan unless we have an engineer that stamps the plan for his nineteen percent share of the revenue. And it's just, it's an archaic bureaucratic system. It would be so much easier, because gave us the money, it's if you spend it on roads, and make your honor write a letter to the state every year, saying that what we gave you went into your road code. That would be the simplest way.
Well, it also saved nineteen percent of what you could be applying to the roads instead of spending.
And hard to regulate the ways to get the state approval on the plans, because they're accurate. I mean, that was something we discussed that.
But that, and again, that, that also includes some equipment, about MFT, you can use MFT money to buy equipment, trucks, snowblowing, things like that. And that's where it gets abused, and, and it does get abused. You understand that?
As long as they give you a rule book, and then your auditor.
Your auditor's got to go to it. I mean, if you've got the rules, you have to abide by.
Advises a controller of that status.
And who violates rules more than anybody?
Well.
Huh?
Are you affirming that I-DOT bureaucracy is violating the decision?
No, I'm not saying, but I'm just saying, that's what happens, and that's how people get in trouble.
Well, then maybe they should treat it in tax the same way, and have it go through a control, and.
No, I.
Okay. I'm going to start that. And so, but, but.
What he's saying is, like, the Dixon case, he said abuse is positive.
That's a good, good example.
You punish everybody because one town is something wrong.
That's what they do. That's what's happening. I understand it's wrong, Bob.
Being wasted on bureaucracy is hard to handle.
I understand, but that's what happens.
So we wanted to, I'll have the letter.
You have it?
Uh-huh.
All right.
The Illiana Expressway, uh, you definitely are, are for that, south of town.
Well, you know, there, there's fifteen million dollars in the last supplemental appropriations that were passed, uh, for, uh, just to have some private partnerships with the Illiana. Uh, so we're, we're moving forward. I know we, we talked about deciding location, things like that.
Land use planning, uh, if, if there's any chance at all for any kind of grants or money available, because we're shifting our focus from northern, northern part of the village now to the southern part. And we hadn't really done no planning at all, south. And now with the proposed Illiana going where we think it's going to go, uh, we have to shift our gears a little bit, and anything we can do to get, we don't have money for planning. We do have a balanced budget, we don't have a lot of money in there for planning, so.
Well, again, let's, let's, let's make sure we can talk, make sure we, we can say, we say, we say open.
Is this definitely be an economic tool for the village? I mean, the Illiana going south of town, so I can see nothing but a win-win situation with that. Any other questions? Speak now, anybody? Hey, we don't get state reps coming all the time to our meetings.
Mr. President.
Huh?
We're having office hours, so, sir, we're having office hours, so we, we can do that.
That sounds good, we're going to set that up, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thanks so much, Mr. President, thank you, appreciate it.
I thank you, thanks for your time coming down, really appreciate it. Okay, under my report real quick, uh, everybody get a chance to look at the, the contract with Homewood disposal? Any questions or comments on it? Everybody understand that, that, uh, Homewood had in their proposal, or they wanted in the contract, uh, if the EPA or the state would mandate any new charges, that they would have the right to, uh, increase the fees. And we kind of objected to that, and we said we'd give them that five-year window, and at that time and point, uh, then we could sit down and renegotiate if there was fees that were going to be implemented in that time. Uh, or we had the chance to just continue the service and go with somebody else, or bid it out. So everybody understand that? Also, the yard waste proposal, uh, is something that you can consider in the future if you want to. So, uh, this would be ordinance number eleven seventy-eight. Uh, need a motion authorizing the president clerk to sign a contract with Homewood for ten years.
So.
Second.
Motion is second, yes, Bob?
Under discussion, Mr. Agalum, Homewood disposal is here tonight.
Yes.
Now that the, the whole debate process is over, I ask you to attend. If any trustees have any questions regarding the contract with the service, or any comments regarding the service. He's here tonight to listen, he can put a name to the face. Uh, he's an individual that we didn't negotiate with, in addition to Hank Bots from the ally, who spent several months on this process. And, uh, it's good to see it at least come to an end. And not only got what they wanted out of this deal, but we're here at the end, and it's finally the end of what, seven, eight, nine process?
And again, Tom, I, I don't think, I've never heard any complaints with Homewood disposal. And I don't know about the rest of the board, and that's one reason. Your service is excellent, you know, you know, your employees do a good job, so. Like I said, we had controversy, what's that?
I promise you that's going to be.
Well, like I said, in, in the, well, our discussion, the delivery of the containers, what, that was something that was brought up, when is that going to take place?
March twenty-fifth, we'll start delivering the garbage containers, so we have to get the word out before the.
Yeah, we have to get that word out, so, that's important, so.
Yeah, this is an important one right here.
Yeah.
Everyone in town is going to get a brown, from ninety-five gallon container similar to their recycling bin, for general reference. If you do not want this bin after it's delivered to you, call Homewood, they will come pick it up. Or they will deliver you a smaller one, if this one is too big. If you think you need a second one, they will provide you a second container for, how much a month?
No, if you, for refus, refus, you don't, nothing, Bob.
No, the first, the first one, there's no charge.
The second one wasn't charged? I didn't think there was a charge on the second one either.
Two seventy-five a month.
Yeah. Now, what happens if somebody already has one that has attached the lid, that is in good condition, then what happens? They can't use that? Or what's the?
No, if, if you do not want the cart, you can continue to use the cans or bags, whatever you currently use. Um, if you have a cart with lid, if our equipment will pick it up, it's fine, it's not a problem. If you have more than what your cart will hold, you can put it next to the cart, it will get picked up, it's still a take all service. Uh, there's going to be information delivered with each cart, along with a recycled gallon. Uh, hopefully that'll explain most of it, if it doesn't, just give us a call.
You're saying if you get a second refuse container, who's going to charge a two seventy-five for that? Additional one? Why would I do that?
Uh, you don't have to.
I mean, I, I can go, go to Menards and buy a can, and, and, you know.
As long as the machine can pick it up.
No, no, you don't need a machine to pick it up.
If it's a regular.
So, I mean, yeah.
Some of them say, I don't want a Homewood can, I want to keep using my own can, and they're not going to. That was different than the other proposal where you had to use that ninety-five gallon can. What they would provide is an unlimited number of charges, these are the little new sequences in the contract. And I noticed this morning, my neighbors just have one little bag of garbage out, it's all a can.
Yeah, most of them, most of them.
Ninety-five gallon container, that's up to now. Once it's delivered to them, they can call Homewood, I don't want it, I have a room for it, get it out of here, or they get us home. And Homewood was looking to put it up there. But our goal was to have everything that goes.
They want that with the arms to, to pick it up, so.
And we want garbage going around.
Yeah.
So, what about the recycle?
Same, same as what you got. What?
Same can you already have.
Green can. Yeah, everything's the same.
I'll be ready for the phones to light up when they do, but hopefully the newspaper can get the word out, because.
Any other questions or comments on, on the service? You got a motion and second?
I just want to comment that Homewood service, you know, it's been excellent over the years. We're hoping it keeps up for the next ten.
It absolutely will. Same here.
Okay, this is ordinance number eleven seventy-eight, right? And with that, roll call.
Clear.
Yes.
Guaranteed, yes. Samantha?
Yes.
Propros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Wean?
Yes.
And item number two is establishing the refuse rates, uh, for the next ten years. Bob's got them all laid out here, the increases and everything, anybody got any questions on them at all? Yes?
I want to explain that there was some trustees that said, I want to guarantee that these rates are locked using hedge funds, so if the board of the country couldn't spend refuse money on something else, they're not pledged the rate. If you pass this ordinance tonight, you can't rate the refuse, and it's for the purpose of enhancing these rates. Unless they change the order. Unless they change the order.
Right. Everybody understand that? So, we know what we're holding on. Need a motion on that, please?
Second. What's the motion?
Ordinance number eleven seventy-nine. Is it a second? Okay, motion is second.
For the better of the public, the refuse rate can be doubled up by one dollar per month July first.
Does that come with a grass container in that or?
No.
Okay. That, roll call?
Weeley?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Capurros?
Yes.
Samansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Item number three has been taken care of. I talked to Mr. Popovich myself personally, and he said they worked out there for about probably two different weeks fixing tracks out there and everything is smooth again. So, it's taken care of. Illiana Expressway update, we will have the, have any meeting Wednesday. Wednesday, I think that is. It was fourteenth. I got the email on it. Yeah, maybe it is. Oh, yeah, you've got fourteenth here, but I know it's Wednesday. I don't know why I have Wednesday on the screen, but we got a stakeholders meeting in Piattone, and we'll get more updates. IDOT has met with the property owners all along the Illiana Expressway. They had one, they had two meetings in Indiana, one in Piattone, and I think they had two in Wilmington with all the property owners that would be affected in that quarter. Find out any problems or anything and discuss those. They're going to land lock any property, what the state might have to do, or whoever's going to build this expressway by that portion, that would be land locked. So, they, you know, didn't, didn't land lock any properties. So, that's been taken care of.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Have you heard how the Indiana side is going?
I haven't heard, no. I have not. I have not heard anything.
I'm just wondering if they're progressing as much as Illinois is at this point.
I don't know. I heard they were dragging, that is a long time ago. I heard they were dragging feet a little bit over on the Indiana side. But like I said, IDOT, I think, has done an excellent job, and, and the consultants, as far as keeping the public informed. If the airport process would have went like this process was going, it would have been smooth. But unfortunately, I guess they went hard way. This is, the Illiana's been, been great, I think.
Well, there was only one person in charge. That's the two state departments of transportation. When the airport was involved, you had two different entities involved.
Yeah.
The state, the state's Department of Transportation of, of Aeronautics, and you also had ALNAC. So, it created a huge mixed bag of directions.
But see, ALNAC never even came about until, what, probably eight, nine years after, after Governor stated that this is where the third airport was going to go. ALNAC jumped on board after that, and they, they found somebody. They weren't on board right away with the airport.
Yes, but it was after they got involved when it all got messy.
I understand that, I understand that. Like I said, they weren't in it.
I agree.
To begin with, you know, so. And again, I guess we talked about the airport. Everybody's up to speed on that. I think we had enough questions this evening. And item number six, I think we did. State, we had a meeting with our, our state rep. Letters regarding the express, that the public hearing, this is IDOT's hearing that we had, oh, what was that, about three, four months ago, Bob, that we met? We had some concerns as far as the stoplight on three ninety-four and Route One, the delay in making right-hand turns. You have to wait forever as you're coming down Route One. Their statement, and they addressed the issues that we had here. Their statement was that the traffic is going too fast and that. I don't know why they can't reduce the speed limit, but.
I can tell you I'm there every morning and you're there for a good two minutes. And if someone comes off of Route One, that clock resets, and there's nobody coming. And that one day, I told you guys, that morning, I saw you guys on Friday, it literally created an accident, and it was on the southbound lanes where that light turned red. There was a rear-end collision. And if they would have never had that happen, that accident wouldn't have happened.
No, no. Like I said, we, we addressed our concerns. One thing, they are, where three ninety-four merges down into two lanes, they are going to put more signs like up on the side so you can see at night, especially when you're narrowing down, you can go off the shoulder very fast. And they are going to address that concern. So, like I said, at least they, they replied anyhow. I, I was surprised, you know, because normally you go to these meetings and you never hear anything. And, and like I said, we, we spoke up, so. Anything you want to add, Bob?
I'm seeing a dyke from the plane. They never put the snow fences up along.
Yeah, they did that.
They sent me a letter. Sorry, we can do it.
Yeah.
They did do it.
Yeah, but they never stayed up. Whatever they, whatever they did, they kept on going up.
They showed effort.
Yeah, that's right.
Not like we had a lot of sound.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just like our, our ice skating rink, keep up with the salt fences, keep putting up.
As long as, hey, Jonathan, that salt, that ice rink is the best investment we've made in this. The money we're saving on salt, unbelievable.
Exactly. Uh, item number eight, we've been approached to participate in a corridor study of the Illinois three ninety-four Route One corridor from Haiti. And the study, they want to include us. The study would go down to the county line. I think that this is something that we participated in. Oh, I'm trying to think how many years ago that was.
Yeah, it was called Italian Corridor Study.
Yeah. How long ago was that?
I believe it was ever.
Yeah, I can't remember. I know I went to the meetings and, and I guess nothing ever happened. But with, with the possibility of, of a third airport, and also the, the proposed bypass to the west side of the village, I think it's very, very important that the village get involved in this corridor study. First of all, when you're taking four lanes and dumping them into two lanes, if, if the thing is going to be congested, where's all that traffic going to be going down into two lanes? You're going to have a problem. So, I think it's something that, that we ought to participate in. So, any, any discussions or comments on that?
So moved.
Second.
Well, I need motion first.
John at the desk.
Scott, you need a motion? John, okay. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? None, roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Samansky?
Yes.
Capurros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Weeley?
Yes.
Okay, I think the last item, yes. Last item, I had a request for, I had a request by a concerned citizen as far as construction of some of the homes going up with the vinyl, all on one wall, no windows or anything of that nature. And I was approached about the possibility of possibly coming up with a architectural review board. Again, we had this in our ordinance at one time, and I believe that was taken out. And I said, I know there's concern about the appearance of, of homes that are being constructed. And we cannot really dictate a lot to the existing HOAs or the homes that are already annexed into the village. But any future developments, I think you, you would have a say of what you would like to see as a, as a board. I don't know what your feelings are. We'd have to come up with guidelines and things like that.
The issue you're going to have is normally that when someone comes to do a, a full development like Cardinal Creek or Preserve, what you would, what you would have is it would go to planning and zoning, do over all that. And it would be the stipulation from the village that the planning and zoning go through all of those details. And they, they pretty much establish the expectations of the village, and it comes to the board. That's how Reserve, Hunter's Chase, all of those have those stipulations. So, if the house is being built to the stipulations of that unit development, we have, even if we had an architecture review board, they have no say for the fact that it is superseded by the passing of that unit development. We couldn't make a change because the unit development is written. It's all the requirements that on that property are under the responsibility of the HOA and its architecture review requirements, or whatever that unit development was. So, if it's in an existing development, you couldn't do anything. If it's in the original part of town that doesn't have that, you would have more control.
Let's see, what you could do is you could enforce what's currently there.
No, you can't.
You can enforce what was originally approved.
You can enforce what was in the unit development, but if their architecture review committee has, once the HOA takes over, this case, this took place in ours, when the HOA takes over, the HOA needs to establish an architecture review committee. That committee has the overall say of the direction that goes on. Even if the village says, oh, that's fine, the committee can supersede that and say what they want to have happen. And until that committee approves it, the village can't release a building permit. They need to have that. It's got, it's written in their bylaws that that's what needs to hap, happen. And that happens in, in our area where the architecture review board has to give an approval before the village can release the building.
But there's a second stage to this as far as, is it actually happening? Once it's approved by the architectural committee, is the final project approved properly? I think that's what we're talking about.
Well, in, in, in this case, and I got the phone call, the developer is the HOA. Developer signed off on it. We had no say on it. Had no say on it. I mean, what's the developer? He was the HOA. So, there's no HOA established at this time. He was the architectural review.
Did, did it comply with the, with the unit development, though? Was there a minimum of brick requirement? If there wasn't, then he can do what he needed to. If there was, he's in violation of the unit development.
There was, I, that I recall, and I, Bob, you know the principle a little bit more, more than I do, but I don't think it violated anything because they've got some of the same types of units throughout the subdivision already, same way. Some of the concerns. So, like I said, that's, it's up to you.
Mr. President, the concerned citizen, you speak of it's not bashful. It's here in the rules.
I don't want to say that.
Okay. And he doesn't care, I'm sure. Do you?
No.
No problems figuring out.
I, I mean, I don't think Phil, Phil realizes that in existing, I'm being very helpful. He doesn't go wrong. I mean, that existing subdivisions may not be something you.
Right.
He's concerned about.
Is that what you were?
Yeah.
Well, it's true to me that there was a number of problems going on with that house. But one of them was that it certainly didn't look like the rest of that subdivision. And I understand it sold, but why do all the, why do you throw out what was approved just because someone re-bought the lots because they went belly up? You know, and vinyl boxes is going backwards. And you need to make the architectural a little bit interesting, especially, I mean, my God, you know, right if it was green at the, you know, Fenway Park, you know, that house had gone.
I know where it's at.
On Bald Eagle Drive. It, it just, the village cannot afford to go backwards. You know, I, I talked with Scott Evans, I'm in one day, and he's, you know, we thought, well, in our discussions, what can we do to kind of, you know, even though you have the minimums, which people right now build to minimums, what can you do to entice them to, you know, make it a little bit interesting? Even if it costs the village a little bit now, it's not going to cost you in the future because if they build garbage now, it impacts everyone that's built well, and it impacts the future. And the, the times aren't going to stay like this. And so, I, I think you, you have to figure out a way to, to, you know, stop that type of building because the develop, a lot of these developers don't even live in town. They could really care less. They're, they're out there to make the buck. Well, don't make them buck on our back. You know, build quality, be proud of what, you know, everything I do, and I'm sure most everyone that, that works, you know, my name's on everything I do. And I wish these developers thought the same. So, I, I, I just would like to figure out how to stop the vinyl box onslaught that you see out in Plainfield, you see out in, you know, a lot of these places. It's, it's taking them cheap way out.
Well, that would have been part of the unit development. That whole, that whole, even if someone comes in and buys that property, the unit development, regardless, still take precedence. So, if it's in the, if it's in the unit development's requirements, he's got to be in compliance with it. If he isn't, i- i- it's not like a guy comes in and says, ah, the heck with it. He still needs to be compliant with that.
Well, and part of the problem is having the developer being the HOA. It's no different than sire representative. I'm an enthusiast. I really get our mouth shut on this one. The, the people who are getting the pensions, creating the pensions down in Springfield, the last thing they want to do is cut their own pensions and cut their, their health care because they want to have the best health care from the day they quit down there till the day they die. Private sector doesn't get it, and they don't get it down, downstate. And I'm sorry that I just let you miss on you.
But, and, and again, Phil, Phil, if, if the.
I'm talking, talking healthcare, talking healthcare, sixty-five going social security with the rest of us, right?
But if, if the unit, if the unit development is established and it provides those rules, it doesn't matter who is the developer. Because the, the unit development was approved by the planning and zoning of the village. It started the base requirement. They can go more than that, but they cannot go less than that. So, if the unit development is sta, if the established rules for that unit development stated, you've got to be all brick on the front, he can't violate that. And we can't change the rules for the houses in that area because the village has approved that unit development. So, by establishing an architecture review committee, it's for every house that's being built outside of a unit development. And that house is in a unit development.
And I do agree with your first statement about planning zoning, you know, because these developments are going to come to us first. And yeah, you do have the future where we can have a little bit, a little bit of negotiations on that part. I agree. I don't know what the agreement was with the original Cardinal Creek development.
It went through the planning and zoning.
There's architectural guidelines.
There's architectural guidelines in that. In fact, when they went to go and develop onto the golf course, it came right back to planning and zoning. And there were more issues there of what kind of houses, how they're going to develop it. There's, there was a ton of discussions on that over six years.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't, I, I just got on right at that point in time. All I, all I did was, you know, if there's some way you can, can entice the developer to spend five grand more and make that thing look better, it's better for everybody in the village. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Phil, did you, did you know that that was started out as a ranch?
Uh, I'm well aware of the circumstances now of.
Okay, I, I was not aware of that right away, and, and.
We got him like, like what I said.
Yeah, and that started out as a ranch, and it wouldn't have looked so much. And now it has been corrected. He is going to correct some of that, so.
Anyway, so that was just.
But here's, the issue you're going to have is if he needs to put brick on the front of that, he does not have a brick ledge built into that foundation, so that brick won't be on there.
But he does have a veneer on there. It, this, what it, what he has is a cast veneer.
Yeah.
And so, he can do, he can do what he's doing now, which was on the plans, which I did see of how that was applied, which is fine. You don't need that brick ledge. But you're right, that's what brought my attention to the whole thing. When they put it up and there was no brick ledge on that in front of that thing, I said, ah, there's something really, there's something goes south on this one. So, that's why I, why I came to the village and to find out more about that house.
Which seems to go on for a year and a half to build that stupid thing?
Although it was a foundation issue.
It was a nightmare for the people.
Okay, the question is, would this board like to have an architectural review committee? I have two people already volunteered, and I think probably no problem. They, they have to understand, though, once a permit comes in, they're going to have to meet and go over the prints. So, that's going to be a week, could be a weekly thing if you were busy again.
But it only applies to areas outside of unit development.
We understand that. I understand that. We, we, I, we're well aware of that.
As long as people understand that.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. You're not going to, yes.
The architecture review committee could look at departments and see if they could form a review that way.
Exactly.
They could do that. They could meet with the builder and persuade him to do something different. They may not have an illegal basis because the builder could like this one.
Right, right.
But if you think that's an exercise that's worthwhile, it's entirely up to the builder themselves. You know, hey, we should try to meet with the guy and say, oh, your building plans are trying to stay. So, like Mullins was the one that had windows, a cheap addition that.
Couple windows on that side would have helped break up.
Well, just the back, the rear windows, you got these holes. Mullins are fifty bucks a window. So, for what? A hundred and fifty bucks, the outlook would be different already. I mean, it's simple things that don't cost a lot of money. They're saving a buck.
But again, you understand that developments that have already been approved, which have HOAs, that we have no say on.
Well, I am well aware.
Okay, no, that just, just weren't, you know.
And I have volunteered too.
Yes, I know you did.
I will come in every day.
I got a second volunteer tonight, so.
Very good.
Let's don't be carrying away. Let's see if.
Well, this is what, if the board wants to do this, you're going to have to.
We got to go with the suggested guidelines and things.
You got to go back to the, then you got to go back to those architectural guidelines that were kind of tossed around and never agreed on.
Yeah. I got a question. Who currently reviews it? IU from a zoning point of view and the building inspector.
But they don't review it to the architectural requirement.
So, we have paid staff already doing this.
No, 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 no. They only review that it's, it's in compliance with.
That's, that's what we're saying that.
But no, that architectural requirement is not what he's looking at.
I'm looking for the HOA sign off.
Yep.
The HOA sign.
And when Stan, when Stan signed off on it, that was it? Good enough for you, right?
Well, and Stan Kennedy and Perry Cross.
Well, and Stan Kennedy in Prairie Crossing, it's lip A and lip B.
Mary.
And Stan in MGM.
Their, their own architectural review committee reviews it, and they make the approval, once the approval happens, Bob's make sure it's on there, permit's approved.
Now, if you're going to do a thing where you want to persuade people to do something different, that should come from a committee, not from the staff. You know, if you're going to sit down.
Because that's his opinion, and you're elected.
And see, and see, the issue is going to be, he's, he has the right to come to the village and say, this is garbage, because I've got, I'm going for my permit, I've got my HOA release, there's nothing in it that states I have to go to anybody else. So, I mean, you're right, he can finger you all that, he doesn't have to deal with it, he could, he does, he needs to comply with zero additional other than what his architecture review committee states, so this additional factor we're planning on putting in there, it doesn't really apply, if someone really doesn't care about what the village's attitude is on it, they can completely go against it, because they're, they're still legally right to do it.
The house in question has public overhangs, we discussed, it's overhanged on a two-story, twenty-four, which looks bad. So maybe that's a suggested guideline, that two-story must have twenty-four, ranch style must have eighteen, but then someone in the building trade would come and say, well, we can't get proper ventilation with that kind of heat. I'm not a builder, I don't know, I have no idea, either be yes or no, or there's people who are true. So you need some people with no construction to be on this architect, because they're going to make those kind of arguments, the building. They say, well, we can't validate sopas with that kind of, of heat, I don't.
So. So what's your desire here?
It just seems like, it just seems like more government, more.
It should be a very simple thing, it's, it should be a one, a one-page thing, but, well, number one, got to make sure that they're going by their, what they signed up, like you said, what agreements were.
For that development.
If they're not looking for it, we got to make sure that you would, that's happening. The other thing would be a suggested, you know, to help them along a little bit, that at least in the future, the planning and zoning can go ahead and, what are the minimum things we need to make a house interesting? The eve overhang, windows, and, you know, the change in whether it's a brick or veneer type of fronts, and what percentage? You know, some basic, real basic things to make it to pop a house.
I, I mean, me and you have this conversation also, so, I mean.
So I mean, we're, we're on the same page.
Yeah, I, I know, but it just seems like, I, 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 like, what Brian said, I mean, there's, there's agreements that they should be following. I, I think we have staff in place, we have a building inspector that should be making sure that these things are being followed. It's being signed off by the HOA.
The building inspectors make sure they're in compliance with Village Code of Boca, and NEC for electrical.
We should have.
They should.
I, I, I mean. I, I'm just telling you what they're going to do, they're going to verify if Boca's the building code requirement, that they're in compliance with Boca, and if the NEC of nineteen ninety-seven is a compliant standard for the electrical, that's all they're going to do.
Right, I understand permits and.
But I mean, that's, that's all your building inspectors are going to do.
Very regular basis, but it, it just seems like everyone, everyone's opinions is different as, as to what they like, you know, and, and just because what you may want to see in a house, the person who's actually buying that house may not agree with you.
Or may not be able to afford the additional amenities that you want to put in there.
We talked about this last month, about people being able to afford a dollar a month to be able to have yardway service, and now we're going to start talking to them and saying, well, we'd really like you to put an extra five grand into brick on a house.
I, I, I don't know, that's, that's, yeah, I, I know you want the appearance to look good, I, I.
And so do I, I mean, obviously, so do I.
But that should have been, that should have been established when the, when the development happened, and if, if, if this, if this village and its planning and zoning miss that boat, it's already sailed, and if they've already got it established, you have the right to go back and say, hey, you're not in compliance.
And, and, and I think that's what you would like to.
Brian, that, that.
Kind of what you want.
You got to make sure when those plans come in, that it is compliant, because if everyone's looking at the other stuff, the actual.
But if, but if, if the unit development has established an HOA like ours has, does the village now need to go and second guess that HOA?
But the Cardinal Creek subdivision, the builder and the contractor and the HOA are all the same.
No, they're still, the HOA in Preserve is, I thought it was the residents were taking that thing over, and then they got it taken.
It's a one man.
They still own it?
Yeah, it's a different man, but it's one man, yes.
So.
I thought they finally took that over.
No, they did, they had it taken over, but then when the new buyer came after the foreclosure,
He owned.
He took the majority of lots.
He had lots, that's why.
So, that's kind of where we need to, now you understand?
Good luck on that uphill battle.
So, what, yes, what, what's, what? I want to know if this board wants to have an architectural review board.
I think this should be tabled for further discussion.
All right.
Thirty days, the entire board could change.
Right, that's right, no, you got to wait a little longer than that, but, yeah.
Well, you know what, my, my point is that I, I, it may or may not change, and, and personally, the discussion probably should have happened after that, everybody is seated, because what our opinion today could be changed in thirty days.
I, I, I told the resident I wouldn't address his concerns.
I understand.
And it's my duty to do that, and if the guy had a concern, I'm going to address it, so.
I am willing, I am willing to further discuss this, but I, I, we can make a decision today, but it's going to change, it could change in thirty days.
Bob, give me a PUD for that development, can you give me that? Have you looked at that PUD?
I have not, I'm doing blue car right now, and I, so, so, but yeah, so I'm going to.
Because the issue's going to be, is if they're compliant with the PUD, then you're wasting your time.
I got a, I got one more question on this, could, could we, where maybe Phil could help us with this, come up with maybe a checklist for, for each, for each unit development, okay, here, here's one for Hunter's Chase, here's one for MGM, here's one for Prairie Crossings, where we have a simple checklist, where we have paid staff, then where, where Bob can take that quick minute and, and take a look at a print, you've been doing this a long time, I know you know how to read prints, to where you could look at it and go, okay, this is, this is my checklist, this is when I, I need to make sure, this is good, that this is here, that's there, that's there, okay, we, we got the letter from the HOA, everything's on the checklist, we're good. I mean, do we really need an entire board to be able to do this? I, I think that's a, could be possibly a simpler solution.
Like I said, we had it in our ordinance, we never had, had one before, because we dealt with every developer, and that was taken out. If you want to have that, that's up to these guys, I, I don't.
This house was unique in that it was originally designed as a ranch.
That's right.
And then the second floor popped up, and it misses the second producing, now the, the second story on ranch.
So, if I can, if I could finish, because I wasn't quite finished, so I'm, I'm asking, what are you asking for us to do tonight, you're asking for a motion?
No, I said, do you want to have an architectural review board, that's what I'm asking.
So if we want an.
Do you or don't you?
And if we do, then what?
Then we're going to, we're going to put it in an ordinance form, and then we're going to select people that want to volunteer to be on it. Simple as that, just like you do with any commission or anything else, but you got to get it in ordinance form first of all.
At this point, I actually kind of like the checklist, to be honest with you, as long as, as long as those items are being checked off.
Who's going to make the checklist up?
Well, you know what?
And, and then who's going to go and check to make sure that the stuff was done?
Well, I will be more than happy to swing by and help Bob do that. And that, we're not, we're not going to make them do something that they're already not supposed to be doing, all we're doing is making sure they're supposed to, they're doing what they agreed upon initially, so.
And, and, and that's all well and good, and I understand, when, when we have a lot of building going on, I know in Hunter's Chase subdivision, there was escrow set aside for landscaping, and people asked for their escrow, never put the landscaping in, we got some homes out there that don't have any landscaping, and that was a requirement. We screwed up, or we shouldn't have never allowed it to, and this is the kind of stuff that happens, especially when you're busy. When you're slow, yeah, it's easy, but, uh, things were going way too fast.
Well, you got something to chew on, you guys can, you know, it was brought up, it's out in the open, you guys can figure it out if you want to wait another month or so.
I, I, I think, I think waiting a month would, would be.
It's not, it's not, you know, it's not like, you know, the world's going to end, that should have happened in the seventies.
I, I think Greg is right, there might be, first of all, you'd be time to think about it, second of all, there might be different people sitting up here that have
I, just to make my point, I'm in favor of somebody looking out our backs for something that looks right, you know what I mean, rather than something that looks terrible, by the time we find out it looks terrible, it's too late, and that we can't do anything about it. Please don't misunderstand me, it's just that, what our opinion is today, by the time we go to get this approved, if it has to come back before an ordinance, it could be an entirely different board, and even if we get a consensus or not tonight, it may not make any sense, you know what I mean?
I know, and I can't remember if it was Gail's committee or if it was another different committee, we tried to come up with architectural standards that we all agree on, and it was very difficult.
They went to the planning and zoning two or three times, and it never was agreed upon.
Well, at time, at one time, we were going to try to dictate what colors they were allowed to paint their houses, or, and things like that. I don't know if you want to go to those extremes, I mean, everybody has different tastes, you know? I don't like yellow houses, but that's, you know, that's me, some people love yellow houses. You got a yellow house?
No, I don't.
But if, but if you remember, the, the, the attorney has told, this, we're talking about aesthetics, are we not? And the attorney has constantly raised, be careful with aesthetics, because you can't.
Tim Piper said that if you authorize the drafting in the ordinance on the art committee, it's going to be, it's going to come.
Well, I, I get.
Done this?
Yeah, he needs to advise you with your local council, again, can't do.
Again, a lot of it comes, anything you're going to do with this committee is going to be based on any development that happens outside of PUD. If the committee wants to look at other develop, what's going on inside the development, they need to understand that any comment they make can be ignored, because we're, we don't have a leg to stand on on this.
That's right.
Well, you have a duty, and I agree with Phil, and someone said, protect the neighborhood that did invest in certain styles of the house, and they have the subdivision change hands, and have some guy that totally disregards.
But the PUD takes precedence of what he's doing, the PUD, he's got to comply with the PUD. He doesn't, he has, even, just because he buys out every lot that's left, doesn't mean he can go against the PUD, because that's what released it. He's got to be in compliance, if he isn't, he should be taking the steps to comply, make that house compliant.
They're pretty loose out there.
I, I think maybe we ought to think about this, and we can discuss it next meeting, or you can discuss it two meetings from now, but that would be better, probably.
Because you'll be sitting out there instead of here.
What's that?
Seems like you're trying to sidestep this.
I'm not, no, no, but I.
I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
We can discuss it shortly.
I'll have the attorney, or he's coming anyway, and he'll explain to his people about it. Bill, we're not going to let it die, but I know you as chairman of the site, because you have to let it die.
Remember to send it to me, Phil. I'll look at it.
Thank you, Phil, for your, your concern, I mean, that's, that's great, you know, that, I understand. I, I drove, after I talked to you, I went out there and drove along, yeah.
I just, I'm concerned for the village in its entirety, I, not just for us, I mean, it's, you know, move forward, don't move backward.
Gotcha, okay, you'll put it on the agenda, and maybe you'll discuss next meeting again, then. Any other business, old business, new business? None, motions ordered to adjourn?
Slow move.
Second.
Roll call?
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes, you got two left.